I'd like to call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Lee Sharps.
Here.
Casey Barney.
Here.
Harold Lamos.
Here.
Brad Newton here. Teja Senna-Chivilingam was unable to make it tonight. Before we start, I just would like, on behalf of the board, to express our sincere condolences to the Hughes family, who suffered a terrible loss this week, as did the town. So, we want them to know they're in our thoughts and prayers. Okay, we have no public comment? Sign up, Charlie? Okay. Approval of minutes. We have minutes from the meeting on November 6th. Are there any comments, corrections, additions?
My name was spelled wrong a couple times, but we already corrected it.
You already corrected that, okay. Harold, anything?
No.
Okay, in that case, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 6th as read, as written?
Oh. Susan has a question.
Oh, Susan, yes.
There's one coming, page three, line five.
Sorry, page three, what?
Page three, line five.
Line five, okay.
It wasn't Fran Wendelboh who submitted the proposal for transition, it was the Heritage Commission.
Okay, thank you. That's a good correction. Thank you, Susan.
So, how would you like that to be?
Just say, "The Heritage Commission presented a protocol." Is that the way it should read?
Yeah.
Okay.
They requested--
Instead of "she presented"?
Okay.
Okay. In that case, a motion to approve the minutes of November-- Yes, thank you, Susan. --November 6th is corrected.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda for the week of 11/13. We have a payroll manifest of $16,465. So, I will sign that and pass it along. The department heads. Chief Heath was unable to make it tonight, but in your packets, you will see a purchase request for pager replacements. It says, "We currently have an assortment of pagers of service ranging from the older Monitor, Minitor IV and V to the newer VI," or VI, sorry. "In August alone, we had three minor Minitor V pages, five pages, that had to be sent out for repair. The cost was $523 just to repair the pages. The Minitor IV and V are no longer in production, and it is increasingly difficult to find parts. We have a number of pagers that are currently in need of repair and feel that it would be wiser to replace them instead of repairing them. This request is for the purchase of four Minitor VI pagers with five-year warranty. It's an anticipated expense as we've been aware of the problems with our aging pagers. There are sufficient funds in the equipment and maintenance line to cover the expense." So, can I have a motion to approve the purchase of the pagers for the amount of $1,740?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those?
This is coming out of their equipment--
Their equipment maintenance line, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, should we, this be the one we sign, Charlie? Or do you have a--
The vote should be fine.
Huh?
I mean, I have one to sign if you'd like, but the vote should be--
Okay, the vote, okay, that's fine. We also have DPW with a request. Craig?
Yes. I put a, I gave you guys a quote for a new plow for the F-550 that we have.
Yep.
As you guys know, it's broken down over the past three storms. And the last year, we used it, it actually damaged the foot of the one ton. So, it's time, it's worn out, but it keeps breaking and leaves wear in it. So, I provided you a quote, which is, I got three quotes. River End was $500 cheaper than HP Fairfield and Donovan Chain for the exact same unit, and they're local, so--
Do you have this money in your budget?
Yeah, it's going to come out of the street improvement line.
Okay.
So, I have enough money available. We save somewhere aside for that.
So, the total amount is $6,484.
If you look at the PO, that quote doesn't include a snowfall, which we're going to need.
So, it's $6,884 for the total?
Yep.
Okay, any questions? Any, a motion to approve the expenses?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Is this the newer style? I remember this was the style, you had problems with it rolling back and tearing out the tabs off the bottom of the plow.
Yeah, this is a newer, newer version of that, so it won't have that tab on. That's, that's an old type plow, so it won't have that same problem.
So, these will be the ones with the bolts and not just the bolt and the tabs?
That's right. Yeah, that's what I was told, that it won't, shouldn't do that again.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I just wondered what's left in your, in that line for the rest of the year?
Well, that's street improvement, so we held it off from some, it's like summer stuff. I'll, it's, it's $8,623 in there right now, so--
Okay.
I'll have a couple thousand left in case something happens during the winter, or maybe a guardrail needs to get fixed or whatever.
Nothing ever happens.
Okay.
Right.
Nothing. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Okay. Any other department head reports? No, all business. Ashland, 150th committee update. Jane?
Hi. Well, first thing we wanted to do was to request that, the logo that we developed for the 150th, to see if it could be on the town reports cover for next year.
Okay.
And I sent a copy of it with the--
Yeah.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah. Any, any, a motion to approve that to be on the town reports cover?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
We just had a motion to approve the 150th logo to go on the town report for next year.
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Thanks, Susan.
No? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Jane?
Thank you.
Yep.
And I'll work with Patsy on you, if you can't, you know, or do you need a logo, a PDF or whatever.
Yeah.
And the other thing we were wanting, if the schedule of events that we have, if that could be included in the committee board as well, just as to document what events occur.
Yeah, it would make sense to me. Motion to allow the schedule of events for the 150th celebration to go on the town report?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
You welcome?
And then I just want to update you on kind of where we are in a lot of the, what we're planning.
Sure.
The committee has sold mugs, ornaments, and patrol bros. We did them at the town yard sale. We made about $700 and received a $500 donation--
Wonderful.
--from a Roy Wheeler of Laconia.
Okay.
We also sold those items and license plates at the open house here at the Ashland School last week. They invited us up, which worked out well. Didn't have a lot of sales, but we did have a lot of interest, and we passed out the schedule of events and the book of, the order form for all the items.
Where can we purchase them going forward, Jane?
They are right now, they're, we have them at Fran's Ceramic and Gifts on Main Street.
Okay.
She has everything except the license plate.
Okay.
Elaine Hughes Realty has everything else, including the license plate.
Okay.
And we're also going to be, we have a spot at the Ashland Community Church for Christmas Night in Ashland--
Wonderful.
--on December 1st.
Okay.
So, we'll be there selling through all of that as well. We'll have everything.
Yep.
So, and I did bring, just so you can see the actual license plate. And what we're doing is, we have a form on the top that tells them exactly how they can be displayed on their car--
Okay.
--what the parameters are--
Yeah.
--so that they can't be like, "Oh, I didn't know that." So, this way, this is exactly what we wanted everybody to know.
Good idea. Great. They're beautiful.
Yeah, they are.
Thank you. Another thing we did that we just got was a--
Nice.
--calendar that we did. It's all black and white. It's all places that are gone or that have changed, like the 44 Main Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Old pictures, up to the present, that type of thing.
Very nice.
All the way through.
Well, cool.
And that, those we just got.
Okay. Nice.
So, we'll be starting to be selling those as well.
Okay.
We also have, we've completed an application into Merritt Village Savings Bank for their bank fund that they always give out in nonprofits. And we haven't heard anything yet. We did complete that.
Yep.
We've done press releases for October and November, updating people. And our dean has done an awesome job of updating and putting us on the Ashland website, which we really appreciate.
Good.
Kelly Hughes and I met with the Ashland School and went through what we're planning for events, and we're going to be working, they're very excited about working with us. One of the things we're probably going to do is some kind of a poetry contest. And, can't remember what else they were thinking of. Oh, and then some of the things that, like the cemetery walks that we're going to do, they would be glad to have us do our dress rehearsals in front of some of the students, which would be a big help to us to see what works and what doesn't work.
Great, wonderful.
So, that would be exciting and fun. That'll be nice learning for them, so. We do still have to do the formal request to the school board as to the fireworks, but everything else, we've received approval on.
Okay.
Hobo Railroad is all set with the train ride to and from the Common Man Inn for the Civil War Ball. And we have a gentleman who actually set up the Morse code machine in the railroad station. He's from Connecticut, but he loves this area. And he's going to be our station agent to sell tickets.
Okay.
And he's working on coming up with souvenir tickets for us, so that's in the works.
Wow.
I just wanted to kind of update you too. We have received some negative response from people about doing the Civil War Ball at the Common Man Inn in Pluma. And I just wanted to kind of verify, as I've told these people, some of the reasons how we figured out and selected that place. We originally thought of the Legion, but it's too small. While we thought of the Ashland Gym, but we really wanted to have an event where, number one, you have to put the floor mats down, so it's difficult to dance on. And also, we wanted to have an opportunity, if people wanted to be able to have some drinks, that they could. And then we thought, well, maybe we'd do a tent, but then you have to find a site, and you got to rent the tent. You got to get four. You got to-- And then also, you'd have to monitor it.
Yeah.
The advantage to the inn is, number one, we can ride the train there and back, which is great. And the setup is all there. Any, you know, people want a drink, that's fine. It won't be our responsibility.
Right, right.
It's totally on the inn.
Yeah.
So, for that reason, that's why, how we got to that--
Okay.
--selection.
Okay.
Even though it's not an inn in Ashland, it still will be involving the Ashland Train.
Yeah.
So, it'll be part of the event. Utility pole banner, we finally finalized that, and so now I, and I did compare prices with Mega Print, and they were still, it was about $12 more. So, we have a meeting next week to decide, we'll probably go with J.D. design and start marketing those. The L.W. Packard Bell, we haven't had a chan, haven't had a chance to actually look at the bell. David Pocket and I did meet with Craig Moore at the River Walk Park--
Okay.
--and looked at areas where we could place the monument, what would work, and Craig, you know, between what Craig was able to, you know, suggest and what Dave Moore, Pocket feels we can do. So, that is progressing. So, hopefully, over the winter, we'll come up with an actual design--
Okay.
--and be able to get some idea how we're going to market that.
Okay.
And we made the final choices on the cemetery walks. We've gone down to the cemetery and found out where they all are, so over the winter, we can do the map for the, for the two walks.
Okay.
We have selected Club Soda for the street dance that we're going to do.
Okay.
And in your packet was a proposed letter that I wanted to send to the Butters. And I think that was something you were okay that I should could do.
Anybody have a comment or a concern? It's this one that says, "Since you own property on Pleasant Street." That's the letter?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And I want you all to know that we, you know, that we're, we're meeting with the police and fire department--
Yeah.
--that there would be barriers--
Yeah.
--and, you know, that we're not going to be playing all night long.
Right.
We will have toilets available and also trash boxes.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to worry about any of that.
Okay.
So--
Comments?
Have you established parking for that? Do you guys know where you're going to do parking? You're shutting down Pleasant Street?
I hadn't gotten, no, there won't be any on Pleasant Street.
I know.
Oh, you mean the people that live there?
Or anybody who's going to the dance.
Yeah. I mean, I figured they could either park like at the Town Hall or the St. Agnes Church.
That's what she was just going to say, "It's a church."
Yeah, I mean, where do they usually park when they have concerts? In the Memorial Park?
Yeah.
The bank or--
The bank or the side of the road there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so probably the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is, that was my only concern, that. And we recently discontinued that road that goes down in the mill. We should think about putting some barriers there, so no one either walks down there and hurts himself or tries to drive up that.
The one that goes under?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah. Because that model is getting buried deep.
All right. So--
That's a good idea.
Okay, so make sure we put, whatever we put on Pleasant Street, that we also prohibit travel going through that.
Yeah.
What is the name of that one? I didn't--
Is that Hillside Extension? What is that? Is it still named?
Is it Hillside, Eli?
Hill.
Hill Avenue, right.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Make sure that's one.
Yeah.
Okay. Great idea.
So, is there a motion to approve the letter to be sent to a Butters?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you. For the day in the park, the ballpark after the parade, we now have hired Moe the Clown to do all his booms. Everybody that went to the Camden once, and he was amazing, so--
Okay.
We've also hired Just Because, a bluegrass group that will, well, also, they do contemporary songs as well. And they did forward a contract, I can, it was in your packet, that I assumed, we just need to have--
We can look at it.
--the town sign.
Yeah.
We're also working with, we've got a wood-fired pizza lady, fried dough, and face painting. One of the projects we're going to do is a community barbecue. We're going to try to get representatives from like the Legion, the Fire Department, everybody to chip in, and we'll just do a barbecue that's just basic Amber Cock Tocks kind of thing.
Okay.
But that would be, rather than hiring someone to do that, we thought it'd be kind of neat if we could get the community to do it.
Okay.
He and I are going to try and go to one of the square contra dances they have in Wentworth to see if maybe we could get a group to come down and to do a presentation of that.
Oh, cool.
Because we do have the Granite State Cloggers coming.
Okay.
And I also was going to go to, I guess they have country line dancing at the Placina Center once or twice a month.
Okay.
I'm going to try and go to one of those and see if I can get someone to come down.
All right.
Thinking it would just be neat to have a variety of, you know--
Yeah.
--something for everybody, kind of. The next item was, there was some discussion about, a couple of people have proposed to us that some of the costs of the police and fire department could come out of the patriotic fund. But my understanding was, from the beginning, that we are more a historical event, not a patriotic event, so it's not, so we should keep that in our budget.
I would, I would say so, yeah.
Does that sound?
I would think so. Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
Can I ask you real quick? You said we need to approve this Just Because contract?
Right, do you vote on it, or do you just sign it?
Yes, yeah, we'd vote. Do you want us to--
Sure, it's right in the--
Want to vote on it now?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if we needed to be reviewed. If the board would quickly review it and--
It's a pretty standard one.
Yeah.
I think it's one they sent out. It's the same one they gave to Camden.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? A motion to approve the contract?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion?
All I can say is they're a really good band. I hired them several times.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I'll look over to it. All right. All those in favor of approving the contract?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, continue.
Excellent, thank you. The last thing we wanted to present was, this is the last thing in your packet, was also the 150th position about the swamp stock event. I know it's being discussed with the Heritage Commission, and we just wanted the board of selectmen to be aware, our feelings are, and we're going to give a copy of this as well to the Heritage Commission, so that they're aware.
Okay.
And I don't know if you wanted to ask us any questions about any of the items, or just hold on to it for now. Yeah, I know it's a formal question.
Just hold on to it for now, for the discussion time.
Yeah.
I think we already have that. I think we already have that, the commission.
You do.
Don't, didn't we, Susan?
You already had it there.
Didn't we already get their--
Their statement?
Their statement to us?
The recent one?
About, oh, okay. I guess not.
Yeah, it might have been an email.
Oh, okay.
That was to a specific member?
Oh, it was, okay. Just make sure they get a copy, Jane.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Wonderful. Well--
Thank you.
You guys have done such great work.
Yeah.
I really appreciate it. The town will really appreciate it. It sounds like a lot of fun. Excellent. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Heritage Commission. You want me to just read this? Okay. This is a note from the Heritage Commission. At the Heritage Commission meeting held on Tuesday, November 14th, 2017, on a motion by Mar, seconded by Sharps, it was voted to discontinue the Fourth of July Committee as a subcommittee of the Heritage Commission. On a motion by Mar, seconded by DeWolff, it was voted to transfer the Fourth of July funds, now part of the Heritage Fund, with whatever balance remains after the selectman vote to accept those funds in a new, non-lapsing account. It is also requested that the Board of Selectmen, having accepted the Fourth of July Committee with its new members, thank the previous committee members who kept the event going and raised funds, now available to continue the event. Katie Mar, Mar will provide the list of names. Absolutely, we owe them a huge debt of gratitude. This event has been something that the town has been proud of for many years, and I know that the previous committee worked exceptionally hard to make it a great event, so I am completely indebted to them, and I'm sure that I can speak for the board.
Yeah, I just wanted noted that the $28,000 that is in their budget now was made by the previous committee, not the current committee.
Right, absolutely.
So, people know.
Right, and they, they worked very hard to raise that money. So, we will send them a formal thank you. Charlie, if you put that on our list, so we can send them a formal thank you. And another request from the Heritage Commission. At the meeting held on Tuesday, November 14th, on a motion by DeWolff, seconded by Sharps, it was voted to request the selectmen's permission to seasonally decorate the Town Hall for the rest of 2017 and during all of 2018. The plan for this upcoming holiday season is to have the town decorated by Friday, December 1st, in time for the Christmas Night in Ashland event.
The Town Hall decorated?
The Town Hall, yes.
We already, I'll speak about that.
What, okay.
We already did Memorial Park and the Booster Club.
Okay, yeah, this is specifically for Town Hall. So, can I have a motion to approve the Heritage Commission decorating the Town Hall for the holidays?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and thank you to the Heritage Commission for doing that. Okay. Project list. Charlie?
Yes, that is me. Okay. NHDOT Transportation Tap Grant. We are, we continue to move along with that project. As, well, we selected KV Partners, and KV Partners has already submitted a scope of work that's been approved by DOT. Next step is getting into negotiation for contract with KV.
Okay.
Thompson Street Project. I attended a state revolving fund workshop today. It was very informative. I was glad that I attended. We talked about how to write the warrant article, and also, the next step in the process, if it were to be approved by the town for funding. GIS mapping. Received a quote from CAI Technology that was broken down over three years in the event that we were to get approval on a warrant article this year. So, instead of having the cost all in one, you know, go, and we can spread it out over years, but we could talk about that more when we prepare the warrant.
Okay.
LW Packard Mill Site. LW Packard Mill Site. As you can see, the build and material survey was completed. One thing that, nobody's got hung up on the groundwater sampling because of all the rain that received in October. Other than that, do you have anything else you could provide?
Yeah, I think you got the same note from Tim Andrews.
Yep.
I can just read it. It's been a quiet, it's been quiet on my end, so you deserve another update on the status of things. Unfortunately, there isn't much new to report because the two attempts we've made to complete the groundwater sampling from the four interior wells resulted in the observation that the groundwater was actually flowing from the wells, indicating recent weather events and significant precipitation have caused a surcharge of water. Since we believe this is not representative of the actual groundwater quality, we've postponed the sampling until after the holiday. The two exterior overburden samples that have been collected did not report any exceedances, which is good news. Of course, the soil samples reported back indicated no exceedances, with the exception of one sample reporting arsenic at 12 parts per million, slightly exceeding the soil standard of 11 parts per million. Arsenic is a common natural occurrence in New Hampshire due to mineralogy, so in the absence of any other exceedances, this does not appear to be a significant concern, and he will continue to update us. So, it's good news so far.
Installing fiber optic cable into our building got hung up a little bit. First light installed the modem, that was really loud.
I heard it today.
For everyone in the office, so they're gonna have to move the modem. And they're supposed to do that on Wednesday. LRPC submitted our covert assessment report. I sent that to the board, and also to some land use members. They got hung up a little bit on the road project with their data software from, what is it, UNHT2. So they've asked to push that back to the end of December.
Okay.
The electric department building, the new building. Primex contacted me last week and was supposed to assess the building to add it to the insurance payroll. And other than that, I have no other updates. Oh, wait, one more. The Whipple House, the lease agreement for that is set to automatically renew in December.
Okay.
Last year, that got hung up a little bit, and I just wanted to give you an FYI, that's set to renew.
Okay. Any questions for Charlie? All right, thank you. Letter of support for Kathleen DeWolf. As you may recall, last, last meeting, we nominated Kathleen DeWolf to be a member of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals of Adjustment. At that time, Selectman Schivelingham opposed her nomination. And since then, Walter Durek has written the letter that he wants read to the public, and I'll just read it to you, we can discuss it afterwards. Fran, at the November 6th, 2017 meeting of the Ashland Board of Selectmen, Item 9A, for the meeting agenda concerned the appointment of Kathleen DeWolf as a full member of the Ashland Zoning Board of Adjustment, CBA. While I was not present in person at this public meeting, I've reviewed the video recording of the meeting and as part of my due diligence to remain informed resident of the town. The behavior of Selectman Schivelingham has prompted me to write this letter in support of Kathleen's behalf. Kathleen joined the Ashland Conservation Commission at a time when an additional volunteer member was desperately needed, so the commission could function in an orderly fashion. She quickly became an integral member of the commission who could be relied upon for completing any assigned task or volunteered duty. Kathleen was wholeheartedly committed to faithfully executing her oath of office. No challenge that we faced as a commission left her daunted. When faced with situations that were new to me, Kathleen willingly offered herself as an invaluable source of knowledge and advice. I came to rely on her ability to dig into the details and minutia of state environmental rules and her patient explanation of them to me. During her tenures, Commissioner, the entirety of our community benefited from her wealth of knowledge gained by seven years of previous experience as a conservation commissioner in the town of New Durham, her passion for protection, promotion, and stewardship of our town's vital resources, and her dedication to defending those precious resources from the threat levied by the proposed construction of the northern pass transmission lines. As Chair of the commission, I regretfully accepted her resignation with the understanding that it was my responsibility to do so, regardless of any personal sentiments. Every person, regardless of status as a volunteer or paid benefited employee, deserves the right to live their life as they choose. Sometimes those choices mean stepping down from an integral role to pursue the direction of their, that personal life is taking them. Frankly, it's none of my business, nor should be the concern of any individual involved in the governance of this town to question the commitment of an individual who faithfully executes one's oath of office. The town, along with virtually every other municipal corporation in the state, would cease to function in an orderly fashion if the countless volunteers were to discontinue their service. We live in an age where willing, qualified residents are increasingly difficult.
To find.
To find, I know, that's what he meant. To berate one such willing volunteer over a matter which has been demonstrated to be of no concern, and to do so in such a publicly humiliating fashion is simply unconscionable. As a current volunteer member of this town's government, this behavior has caused me to question if my commitment to my position is worth the labor of my commitment, if my commitment can be so capriciously questioned by an unbridled tongue. Beyond my offer of the evidence of Kathleen's commitment and dedication to the government of this town, I write as a concerned resident of this town who was deeply offended by the egregious lack of professionalism displayed by Selectman Schivelingham. The voters of this town elect representatives from among our population to carry out executive functions of our government in a professional, personal, personable, and courteous manner. I feel strongly that this is not, that it is not unreasonable to expect that our elected officials, regardless of on the demand of their time or the size of their salary, to act in a manner that is above reproach when representing the town in a public forum. I encourage you, as Chair of the Select Board, to seek a public apology from Selectman Schivelingham for his behavior in front of the residents of this town and the wider viewing audience. Furthermore, I encourage you to seek a personal apology from Selectman Schivelingham to Kathleen for his slanderous remarks. Again, I cannot understate the importance of all the individuals of the Select Board, as well as the Select Board as a whole, to conduct themselves in a manner that is above reproach at all times. Now, Selectman Schivelingham can't be here tonight, but I felt it was important to read this letter anyway, because it is a reminder that we are all servants of the people. We were elected by the people to do the people's job. And as we're always saying, we have trouble finding volunteers, and those who have been dedicated throughout my knowledge of them and continue to be dedicated really deserve to be treated better, in my opinion. This has been done to Martine Badger in the past. I'm gonna read Selectman Schivelingham's response to this. Dear Board of Selectmen and people of Ashland, please excuse me, I'm unable to attend the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday, November 20th, 2017. I recognize that several important issues are being discussed. However, I appreciate your understanding that my absence is for family reasons. I offer the following statement for your consideration. Regarding the letter submitted by Conservation Commissioner Mr. Walter Durek dated November 10th, 2017. First, I'm pleased to know that he and the appointed official had a great working relationship while the appointed served on the Conservation Commission. Second, vetting a candidate that has put their name forward for consideration of appointment to public office is part of the democratic process. Third, Mr. Walter Durek's statements that call into question my professionalism, respect for voluntary service, and state, and state that I was slanderous, do not demonstrate an understanding of what truly occurred, and these statements are inaccurate and wrong. Fourth, I stand by my conduct and decision. Fifth, I respect that the Board has made a decision on the appointment. I believe the appointed individual will bring her best to the zoning board of adjustment, and it is now time to move on. Thank you for your time and consideration. I wish you each and all a wonderful holiday. Respectfully, Tasha Singh Schivelingham. He does not explain why he did not vote for her appointment, nor is it obvious that he intends to issue any public or private apology. I leave it to the Board for comment. Lee?
I have a statement to read.
Yep.
At our last meeting, Kathleen DeWolf was verbally maligned, in my opinion, by a Selectman, Mr. Schivelingham, and I want everyone to know that he acted alone, and I think the rest of the Board was as surprised as I. I also hope no one else was involved from this town in his decision to question Mrs. DeWolf's credibility and her credentials. Her character was also brought into question. In spite of everything she's been through personally the past two years, I am honored she has chosen to remain involved in our town's business. Volunteers are the backbone of this town committees, commissions, et cetera, and are made up of volunteers who care about this town. No one should question a volunteer's integrity or their decisions made while on a committee or a decision to join or step down from a committee. This also happened earlier this year to Martine Badger by Mr. Schivelingham at a public board meeting. For those who haven't seen the TV taping of the November 6th meeting, I urge you to pick it up off our website, watch it, and form your own opinion after viewing it. My opinion is this was slander, something I thought had ended with the Boards with Norm DeWolf sitting and the Boards following him. Speaking ill of our volunteers and residents is not something to be tolerated in public or at all. I know firsthand what distress Kathleen suffered at that meeting. Myself was slandered at a public board meeting in 2009 by two former Selectmen when I was absent even. This type of action not only hurts a person and their families, but it reflects on the whole Board as well. We have very active committees and commissions, and all are run by volunteers, usually the same dedicated individuals. What happened to Kathleen and Martine, two of our most valuable volunteers, was a travesty, and no matter what Selectman Schivelingham states, it was definitely wrong and uncaring, in my opinion. He's written the Board saying he is standing by his November 6th action, which has now been made public, and my statement tonight is in response to his letter. I only hope in the future he'll reconsider before following any troubling line of questioning and public displays of hurting our townspeople, and I apologize to both Kathleen and Martine for any distress these past actions may have caused them, and I hope it never happens again, at least while I'm sitting on this Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any other comments?
Well, I don't have anything prepared on paper, but I think everybody here knows my friendship that I have with Norman, still have with Kathleen. I am the longest sitting member on the Conservation Commission, and I can attest that she fulfilled every duty above and beyond she was asked to and those that she was not asked to, while performing those duties. I understand that Mr. Schivelingham has come to some of those meetings, and does not really understand, you know, how things parted, but with respect to Kathleen and also still to Norman, she was above and beyond what was asked of her. And you also look back and realize at the time when she did part from that position, she was going through a rather hard time of her life and dealing with the loss of a local one.
And I, I question his contention that it is our responsibility to vet volunteers. To some extent, but a very minor extent, I suppose that's true. But we are not paying these people. We are welcoming them to come forward and offer their time, and as evidenced here tonight by two commissions that are here present, working diligently for zero pay. How could we do this without you? And for me to sit here and question your credentials or anybody else's credentials for volunteering their time, I find personally outrageous. We operate in this town on rumors, and those of you who've heard the vicious, nasty, ugly rumors that circulate around this town that have to be invented, I question why, and I question a thousand times, why am I doing this? Well, I'm doing this for the reason you're doing this, for the reason you're all doing this, because we love Ashland, and we, we want this town to be as good as it can possibly be, and we believe in it. And I am, again, personally appalled that one of our own could have made such a statement. So that's just my opinion, and that's why I decided to read it tonight, even in his absence. Casey, do you have any thoughts?
I didn't prepare anything.
No, I know.
I mean, I watched the video, and I've, I see both sides. I feel like, personally, I feel it was a fair question, being a newer Board member, he might not have known everything, although it might not have been the best outlet to do it in, in public. Maybe just go up to her and say, hey, why did you leave? And if it's personal, it's personal, that's fine, leave it alone, but...
But then he proceeded to vote against her. She gave a very good, good answer.
I can't defend that, I did see the answer.
Yeah.
If I were there, I would have voted yes, but...
I'm sure you would have. Well, I just think that we as a Board ought to stand for something better, and, and I hope that this is a lesson for all of us. And again, our apologies to Martine and to Kathleen, and for anybody else who may have been offended by any of us, and if we are offensive to anybody, let us know, okay? Thank you. Enough. All right, new business. Ashland Water and Sewer, Ashland Sewer, construction of a new septic receiving station. As you know, they have been planning this for a lot of years. They have gone to the planning board to present the plans, and at, at which point we had a public hearing, to which all abutters and townspeople were invited to attend. The planning board has written us a note with their findings, and it's, it's not a recommendation, but it's their findings and concerns, their observations. But before we get into that, I'm gonna ask Sewer Department to please give us an overview of your project. We are here to, because it's town land, as it was with the electric department, our job here is to approve the building of, to approve this building or not, not the project, but the building. So, Dave?
Can I just stay here for one minute?
Sure.
License plates.
Oh, right. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, those are nice.
You don't get a complimentary one?
No.
Jeez.
We got a big plan.
I believe that the, that the Board all has copies of these design basis reports, which explains the purpose of the building and gives you, puts you the layout of the building. The building will house the septic receiving station, that was the initial plan, but it is also going to house the new headworks, or reconstructed headworks, and, and the machinery we are going to use to treat sound, town septic as well, or town sewage as well. So the building really has two purposes now instead of the one initial purpose. We are doing this for safety reasons, for environmental reasons, but also because septic receiving provides all of the revenues that we use for capital improvements. The water and sewer rates barely cover, if they do at all, operational expenses. So without septic receiving, water and sewer rates in town would be extremely high. So, that revenue piece is an extremely important part of the project. The building is going to be on the site of where the current building is. So there was already a building there. One of the questions that came up at the planning board was the setback requirements, which, which we will have to think about and approve, but the current building also has the same setback issue, and DOT did not come forward and express any opposition to the project. So we are asking you to accept the planning board's review and recommendation, and hope that you will recommend improvement.
Just for explanation, can you please define headworks?
The headworks is a, is a concrete channel through which sewage and septic flows from the town system into the, into the septic lagoons. Right now, there is a manual bar rack in there, which is just basically a screen which stops some of the non-biological solids, the large pieces, but a lot of non-biological solids and a lot of grit and sand and rocks, small stones and so forth, get through there and are building up in the septic lagoon. So, and the same is true of septic as well. So, the, the purpose of the project is to strain out or filter out all of those non-biological solids and filter out the grit to extend the life of the lagoons and prevent costly repairs and dredging.
There was a site walk that we were all invited to, where we could see the project, and as I understand your explanation, that currently the way those screens are cleaned is manually?
Yes.
And presenting safety and health problems for your workers, and so this new headworks will eliminate that, that step?
Yeah, the, the, the two pieces that filter non-biological solids have bagging devices on them, so those get automatically bagged and then can be disposed of.
Okay.
The same is true of the grid chamber.
Okay, all right. I'm, just for the public, I'm gonna read the observations from the planning board. Property ML0030202 in the industrial commercial zone owned by the town of Ashland, facilities managed by Ashland Water and Sewer Commissioners. The proposed one-story building is not in compliance with the appropriate setback of 25 feet in the industrial zone as required by current, current zoning ordinance. However, the proposed new building replaces the current grandfather building, excuse me, with the approximately the same setback, which has not been documented as a concern by the abutter NHDOT. Construction of the building will include engineered site drainage as required by NHDES. The runoff from the individual impervious surfaces, driveways, will be tied to the engineered drainage management system. The Commissioners stated that there will be little increased impact of traffic or noise on abutters. The building would be constructed on town property and will continue the current use of receiving septic from haulers. Any exterior lighting will be directed downward as required by current site plan review regulations. Fire and safety requirements will be as directed by Steve Heath, Ashland Fire Chief. All appropriate permits will be obtained. A complete as-built plan will be filed in the Sewer Department at the town office. So I guess the first issue for us to, the one thing that we have to address is the setback. As we did with the electric department building, which didn't meet setbacks, we as a Board have the right to waive the requirement for setback. So at this point, I will accept a proposal to waive the setback requirement for the new building.
I'll make a motion to waive the 25-foot setback for the new sewer building.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
My only question is, I see that DOT is not against this. Did you have any input back from DES in regards to setback? I understand it's with the highway, but my only thought is in the evolving society that we're within, and you have other things showing up in your septic that they may be concerned, but they had no, no qualms? Okay.
No, DOT has a copy of the, of the same design basis document that you have.
Oh, DES.
DES, yeah.
Yes.
DES has that, and, and so they are working, we are working closely with them on this project.
Just trying to CYA here, you know, with the previous building that we approved, we gotta make sure that everybody's happy.
Susan?
They would, DES would have to approve the design of the building before it was built.
But I wouldn't assume setbacks.
I wouldn't, no.
Susan, as planning board member, you have...
Just to clarify, the setback from DOT is from the railroad, right? Why not from the highway?
Okay, thank, thank you, Susan.
Lane of travel was my thought, if there was anything that was...
Any other discussion? All those of, in favor of waiving the 25-foot requirement for setback, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, are there any other questions before we make a motion to approve the building? Yes, Lee?
I just wondered, it says there'll be little increased impact of traffic, but don't, don't we want to have more business?
Yes, we do. It, it's difficult for, I mean, we can't really assess the traffic impact.
Right.
Right now, at, in the, in the height of the summer when we have the most traffic, the maximum number of trucks we have is 30 per day, and that, you know, that's the maximum, that's not the average. There's a limit to how much septic we can receive, so, you know...
Totally or in one day?
In one day.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, you can shock the lagoons, and then, there's a problem, and you'll be getting them back to functioning properly again. So that's part of the, what are being encouraged is, is in the process of doing the analysis of that, so we don't really know how many more trucks we can, we can take. We hope that, you know, we hope to increase our revenues eventually.
Right.
We certainly won't increase them during construction, but we, we anticipate at, you know, it's even hard for us to say, you know, two, three more haulers.
Okay. I was just wondering if we're going to be, or hopefully, we're going to be raising the fee for the trucks to come in?
That's, that's part of what we're, what we're studying right now. We have to compete with other septic receiving facilities, and one of the, one of the reasons that the haulers come to us is price, and the other main reason is that the facility is accessible, easily accessible, and it's open seven days a week.
As I understood from the site walk, that the equipment you're considering will also actually measure the amount of septic that you're receiving, whereas now you, you put people on their honor. Is that correct?
Yeah, the original estimate was that that alone would increase revenues by 15% to 20%, because the haulers have really no way to measure, other than by sight glass, how much septic they have. And so, and we do it on the honor system, so... And so, and we do it on the honor system, so...
Any other questions?
I have a question there.
Oh, Craig?
I just wanted to, I know you got, have you been there in the parking lot, if you thought about going out towards the bridge? Or maybe we can think about that, helping them?
Yeah.
Because when the equipment's down there, that's when it's the cheapest.
Right.
To pave, and I know that road.
Right.
Gets a lot of heavy trucks on it.
It does.
It's starting to break up.
Yeah.
On the other side of the bridge towards your facility.
Yeah.
The other part's not too bad, but maybe the town can think about...
Well, it's something that, you know, you guys should work out.
While their equipment's down there.
Yeah, yeah.
We, I'm not sure where the, where the line is, where our responsibility ends and the town's responsibility begins in there.
I think Craig's comment was that if you're going to be doing any paving, you might talk to the town, because we might save money if we're going to approve that road.
We really need to... No, we'll save money on the mobilization.
Yes, we need to determine where the line is. Because we would pave out to where our responsibility ends.
Sure, yeah.
We really don't have a line item for road paving, so...
Right.
No, no.
No, but it's just coordinating efforts, you know, like he said.
We would certainly, we would certainly want to coordinate that.
Yeah, good, thank you, Craig. Any other questions? In that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the Sewer Department building as discussed.
You already had a motion. You already had a motion. I had one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, I had a motion for the setback.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Will this do anything to improve the filtering out of solid plastics or any of the things on your outflow? I know, I've read all the studies, further on down with the Merrimack River, how they're having a big problem with stuff coming out of, or in the vicinity of, resource management has some issues with some stuff ending up in the river down there. And is this going to improve that for you?
I'm not sure.
Well, floating things that are plastic that end up, you know, anything that would get through, where you said you had the fingers, the bar set up, where it was catching larger items with this new setup, get some of the smaller things as well?
There are two pieces of equipment that are designed to remove all of the non-biological solids and includes the plastics and...
Okay.
Pieces of wood and larger rocks and rags and those kinds of things, yeah.
They actually had a piece of, that piece that they're considering buying on site, working a whole day. And how many haulers did you have come in?
Was it nine?
Yeah. And putting it through the paces and seeing how, I mean, I think the book that you all got describes how that solids are taken out and washed and disposed of, so...
Yeah, basically, it's a piece of equipment with a large barrel with perforations in it. So the septic comes into the barrel, which is rotating, the sewage goes through the, you know, goes through the holes and the non-biological solids are caught there. And there's baffling on the inside which sends the solids to a, to an auger, which then, in the auger system, it washes the plastics and the rags and stuff and compresses them and dries them so they can be disposed of, easily disposed of.
So it's like a really big centrifuge?
Something like that.
Well, the centrifuge works very quickly. This has like a quarter horsepower motor on it. It just goes very slowly and, yeah, removes, you know, it removes 100% of the stuff.
Thank you.
We're worried about, you know...
Any other questions before I ask for the motion? Okay, a motion to approve the Sewer Department plans for the building on town land?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, select board items, deliberative session. Oh, oh, yeah, I forgot, I was supposed to read a memo. Another one from Selectman Schivelingham. This is just FYI. All matters concerning the Ashland and Water and Sewer Commission's proposed construction of new septic receiving station would be best decided upon by the voters as warrant articles coming this March. I encourage all of you to formulate and support a motion to send the septic receiving station item, including all relevant details, to warrant article. Thank you for consideration. I don't think somebody who's here can make a motion of any kind, because he's not here. That's what I meant. So I just thought I'd read it because that's, would have been his opinion. Okay, deliberative session.
Yes, that's me.
That's you.
We, last time, we voted on the date, but we didn't vote on a time.
Okay. We've always had it at 1:00.
1:00.
And I think there's some talk about having it earlier.
At 10:00.
At 10:00?
Yeah.
Which I would prefer, because the day gets awfully long and awfully late. It's just that it will go over lunchtime.
Thanks for being here.
But I, any thoughts? Yes, Tony?
I think the reasoning behind deliberative session at 1:00 is because there are some folks that work till noon time.
Okay.
And in order for them to be able to be part of that deliberative session is why, the reason why it's at 1:00.
Oh, okay.
Because some people do work half the days on Saturdays.
Yeah, okay, and we certainly don't want to exclude anybody. Could we just move it up a little, like noon?
Something to do.
I mean, you know, I agree that it gets very late in the afternoon, but I respect what Tony had to say. We certainly don't want to exclude anybody who might not be able to come, so...
I mean, democratically, my thought would be that if the thought was 10:00 and it stands at 1:00, maybe we should think of somewhere in the middle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless that's democratic, I mean, 11:30, noon's fine with me, I mean, whatever works for consensus.
Okay. Well, if we started it at noon, people would still be able to get there, at least for the majority of it.
Then it's better than 10:00.
Okay. Do you mean a consensus or a motion?
Sure, vote wouldn't hurt.
A motion to start it at noon?
I'll do that.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Oh, favor? Aye, okay, well, it's, you know, I would prefer it at 10:00, but I appreciate what Tony had to say. That's okay, Tony. Okay, Economic Development Committee, we have gotten a donation. I think I've told you in the past, we're having a summit, if you will, an economic development summit next Wednesday morning at 10:00, to which we've invited mill owners, a cross-section of business owners in town, some state, local agencies, funding agencies, LRPC, DES, et cetera, to discuss the redevelopment of the LW Packard Mill. The meeting starts at 10:00, it goes till 12:00. We are offering a light lunch. We have no budget. To that end, we have received a donation from Meredith Village Savings Bank in the amount of $200 to buy food for this event. The only way we could get that money, because they couldn't make the check out to me, obviously, was to make it out to the town of Ashland, so it is unanticipated revenue. But in turn, I'm going to ask for a motion from the Select Board to expend $200 to contribute to the Economic Development Committee to sponsor, to provide food for this event, so...
I'll make a motion to do that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
How do donations like that work? Like, does that go into a certain line and then we expend?
Well, we don't have a line, and I researched this upside and down. We don't have a line. It's the same when we ran into that whole issue with the fire department donation and the police department donation. The police ended up having the donate or give it right to the vendor, but the bank couldn't do that for transparency reasons. You know, they have to show that it was for a charitable reason. So they had to make it out to the town of Ashland. And so, no, we don't have a line. It would have been easier if we did. So it'll have to come out into and out of the general fund.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? So we have had several meetings planning this event. I think the Select Board and Town Administrator have received invitations. We're having another meeting, planning meeting tomorrow night, which was supposed to be at the fire station, but there's a number of things going on at the fire department. And so we're going to have that meeting at the town hall at 6:30. Okay, is there...
For the townspeople at home watching, and we know that the meeting is Wednesday 10 to noon, could you specify the date for the folks who aren't? I mean, we obviously know the date.
Yeah, it's not a public meeting.
Oh, it's, okay.
No, it's not a public meeting.
Okay.
It's the 29th, anyway. I mean, it's an event to which we've invited certain people. And we will be providing reports to the public, but it's not, this is just a brainstorming, visioning session, so there's going to be lots of time when we get further along for public input. But this isn't the point, we're just trying to get some ideas as to next steps and how we can move forward. Any liaison reports? Lee?
Heritage Commission met last week and we already discussed that the Fourth of July committee is no longer underneath us. A couple of other things we talked about, we have a new table banner that we can display anytime we go to an event or whatever. It has little pictures of town buildings on it. Katie Mayer showed us some old Ashland postcards from her collection and she suggested that we use the postcard for a series of then-and-now photographs by taking photos of the same scenes today and hopefully our residents will join in this, calling it a home photo project. And we'll have more information upcoming on that, or when we're going to, when we're going to do it. Our L-Chip Study Warrant article, Susan MacLeod said that we need to be getting some positive publicity out for that, and we're going to be working on that soon. That's for the grant to study town hall. And we already asked for the seasonal decoration permission, and we're going to start work on the annual report for the, our annual report for the town report. And we also talked about honoring the Fourth of July committee, which we already did. I'd like to, let's see, I went to the budget committee, they approved, are you giving a report?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't know why I did that, because I was like, okay, anyway. I was there.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry. The other thing is Saturday was a decorating memorial park and a booster club and the Ashland Area Recreation Association and the park trustees, right, Susan? Both joint forces for the day with our usual volunteers who did the tree and the gazebo and shrubs around the park. And then the booster club was also done. And the volunteers I'd like to thank, tell me if I miss anybody, Barb Shero, Jerry Landroche, Kathleen DeWolfe, Susan MacLeod, Katie Mayer, Walter Durak, and Mark Lieber, correct? And I'd like to thank them for all their help on that very cold Saturday.
Do we have a date for Christmas night in Ashland?
December 1st.
Friday the 1st, okay. Good, thank you, Lee. Harold, would you like to just miss the budget committee?
I have to, I do. I'll start with the budget committee.
All right.
The Ashland Budget Committee met last Monday, the 13th. We had a very fruitful meeting. We approved the department's police department, fire department, Parks and Rec, and Department of Public Works, including transfer and highway. There's a lot of great input by both the department heads and the members of the budget committee, and it was a smooth meeting.
Excellent.
I also have one for the Fourth of July. Fourth of July committee met, we had a good meeting established near budget for next year. It was a good meeting as far as the new people involved look forward to making it, looking back to the past, but also moving forward to the future. I look forward to working with them in the future.
Okay. Do we, do they have plans to submit their budget to us along with their rules of procedure that we had requested?
I believe that that is about 90% done, given the previous happenings in town involving Mr. Hughes and he sits on that.
Okay.
It's kind of bound up a little.
Okay, thank you.
Are they, are they going to, are we going to be receiving that rules of procedure that they were going to show?
I do believe so, yes.
Yeah, he said there.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you, Harold. Anything else? Okay, Casey, anything?
Nope, I was out of town the last two weeks for the water and sewer.
Okay, well, I was there.
Yep.
And you've heard what's going on, so I don't think I need to add to that. I know that they've been working diligently on their budget and have submitted it to the budget committee, or are about to submit it to the budget committee tomorrow. That's all I have. Couple of comments.
I have one.
Oh, okay.
Board members need to start thinking about dates. We need to get together to prepare the warrant.
And the default budget.
And the default budget.
Absolutely. All right, maybe you should send out a email and we'll all submit our availability.
Okay.
Okay. Any public comments? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.